Good evening, everybody. Welcome. I'd like to call the regular meetings of the Housing Successor, Successor Agency, and City Council to order. As a reminder, state and county public orders require that all persons must wear face masks while indoors in public settings. Please keep your masks on at all times, including when speaking or talking, including when speaking or taking pictures, please. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sarno. Councilmember Trujillo.
Here.
Councilmember Zamora.
Here.
Mayor Proton Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Mora.
Here. I'd like to call upon City Councilmember Zamora to give us the invocation.
You guys can please stand. Bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on the council as we meet tonight. Grant us both wisdom and compassion as we make decisions about the future of our community. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
I'd like to also call upon Councilmember to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
For me? All right, if you don't mind, I'd like to do something a little different. Can I have John Morris's kids, his boys, just stand up at the top and lead the Pledge of Allegiance for all of us? You guys don't mind? Just come up up here, you guys. Go ahead and lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I mean, no, everybody else.
Oh, no, you guys get sit down.
Everybody else, please be seated. For you two boys. Usually, the youth leadership committee is the one that does this, that leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And we ask them to state what school they're going to. So come on up, turn around, and let the people know. Speak, face that way, speak loudly. Your name and what school you're going to.
All right, I am Matthew. I work for Rio Honda College. And I work for the Hudson. For this city.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel. I also work for Park and Rec. I'm going to Rio Honda.
I am Mr. Zamora. I work for 174th Precinct, and I'm going to Rio Honda College.
Thank you. Okay, you may be seated. Okay, just one more, my daughter, Serena, come on up. Come on, the shy one. Okay, she won't go on, but all my kids attend Santa Fe High School, so three boys are Santa Fe graduates, and my daughter will soon be, so thank you very much. Okay. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you'd like to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda. The City Clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment person, you will have the opportunity to make that comment once the City Clerk announces your name. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please wait until a public hearing has been opened on that specific item. You will have three minutes to speak. City Clerk, do we have anybody in the audience wishing to make a public comment?
Mr. Mayor, there are no speakers at this moment.
Thank you. We will now close public comments and move on to the next item. Housing Successor. There are no items to be considered in the Housing Successor Agenda. Successor Agency, there are no items to be considered under the Successor Agency Agenda. We now move on to item number six. City Council, we have seven consent items. Is there a motion for the approval of the City Council Consent Agenda?
I'll move A through G.
I'll second.
Okay, we have first and a second. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sarno.
Aye.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zamora.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so ordered. Okay. We're almost done, folks. This will be council comments, and it's going to be the end of the year comments only. Councilmember Sarno.
Well, first, Happy New Year to everybody. This year has definitely been an unusual one for me, being back on council and kind of being in the middle of COVID. But I think, John, you handled this tremendously with all of us supporting you. Our staff has done a remarkable job, and I look forward to this year coming up, and hopefully it's going to be better than it started. So I'm sorry I can't be there right now, but I have my little ones here, and I want to be safe for everyone, so. Just hopefully this next year will be a better one for all of us, and God bless.
Thank you, Jay. Councilmember Trujillo.
Hi, John. Just to reiterate what Jay said, you know, it's been such a tough year this year, and we're starting off in a new year. We thought it was gonna, we were, you know, on the road to normality, and it looks like it's not. It's going backwards again right now, but again, with the staff and how we're handling it, we're moving forward, and our main concern is make sure our staff is okay and our residents are okay. But hopefully, this is just still going to pass quick, and we'll start moving forward with city business. Again, I do apologize also. I cannot be there. I've been exposed to COVID, so hopefully I don't get it as bad as other people have, but I wish I was there. This is a very important night for all you guys, so thank you.
Thank you, Juanita. Councilmember Zamora.
I, first off, want to say Happy New Year. Also, God bless all you guys for coming out, and just may God always put a hedge of protection around you and your families. We know that there's uncertainties out there, and we know that God is always in control, so that's first. First, I wanted to bring that up also to my family, friends. You know, just thank you for all the support, Mr. Zamora. Thank you for just doing an outstanding job this year during these uncertainties and, you know, continuing to reign strong. I do appreciate all that you've done here for the City of Santa Fe Springs. Once again, to my family, you know, this year was a great year, you know, starting off, and then just turned interesting, and then towards the end, I mean, just, you know, I just want to give my love and support to my nephew who came out from Oregon. He came out under some difficult times. We just lost a nephew around Christmas time, so it's very difficult for us, but for those of you, always love your parents, love your grandparents, love your siblings, love anybody you have in your family, be grateful that they are, and always give thanks to God for the blessings that they are there tomorrow, today, and in the future. So, you know, God bless you all, take care, and be safe.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Rodriguez.
Excuse me. Good evening, everybody. I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. This is the first time this year that we've seen so many people in this room, and it's beautiful to see you here, and I hope that in the future, this pandemic, we're not going to hear about it anymore, and we can continue to live our lives the way normally. I wanted to express that even during the pandemic, our staff was able to provide spectacular events for us to enjoy. Our staff displayed beautiful lighting and Christmas decorations and just giving us the Christmas spirit. It was a beautiful Christmas, even though we had this pandemic. And because of our city manager, our directors, our staff, we were able to accomplish so many amazing projects this year, and we will continue. It was awesome to close the year knowing that although we still have a lot of work to do, that we had completed projects that we had set out to do. To all my family and all my friends, all you that came out today, I just want to express how important it is, and we're so grateful to have all of you here. Thank you so much to our Mr. Mayor, because that's what I called him every time we ended a journey, Mr. Mayor. We'll get to you later, okay? Thank you.
Okay. And yeah, just like they have mentioned, this year has been a bit of a roller coaster ride. You know, we are resilient. We came through. We have an incredible staff, department heads that, you know, came together. We paid attention to, you know, state, federal guidelines regarding this incredible challenge that we went through, and we figured it out, and we came out at the end. You know, we are resilient, we're going to keep on going. You know, unfortunately, we did lose some of our loved ones during this time, and my condolences to those that have been affected. But we are a strong city. We, as a council, are not done. There's still so much more to do, but I want to thank, you know, our staff for doing an incredible job. You know, the creativity that, you know, that was mentioned. We still were able to do some of our programs, maybe not full-blown in public, but we had Zoom programs, we had the chalk art from Recreation Department, our food basket program did not stop. You know, we continued doing what we had to do to, you know, provide, you know, for our residents, and we're going to continue to do so. With that said, I just want to thank everybody who's here today. It looks nice to have a packed house, so I appreciate you guys coming in. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, at this time, we have a short video concerning Mayor John Morris' year in review and the position. Can we please start that now?
Thank you.
Now, we have some very special guests that want to recognize Mayor Moore for his successful year as Mayor of the City of Santa Fe Springs. First, we have Congresswoman Linda Sanchez on Zoom. Is she queued up somewhere, or is she off?
Yes. Linda, if you could unmute yourself, please.
So it sounds like she's on, but she's not knowing that she's on. Well, we'll come back to the Congresswoman, but we'll now come next to Tony Perez, Representative from Barb Archuleta's office. Tony? Don't, can I keep it on?
Just testing. Good evening, members of the council, and it's a real pleasure for me to be here. My name is Tony Perez, and now today I come to you as now the Senator's District Director. I say that not because I'm bragging, because now from being the rep, now all of a sudden when you're District Director, now everything becomes your fault. And so, but the last time I was here, I was the rep for Santa Fe Springs, and that was a couple of years ago. And what's changed in the last two years? A lot has changed. These weren't here. A lot of things weren't here. The people were. Your leadership was here. I believe at that time it was then-Major Trujillo, who I had the pleasure to just say thank you to. But one thing, a lot of things have not changed, and those are the events that have been happening here in Santa Fe Springs, were right down the street. So even though I wasn't able to attend all of them as a staff member, believe me, I was here for some of those. I do miss, I did miss the Little League, because that was one of my favorite openings when you guys did the opening. But I look forward to being a part of those as these days move forward. But none of this stuff happens unless you have the leadership and organized leadership like you have here at the City of Santa Fe Springs. And while I was here, while I was repping, it was one of my favorite cities, not because of its proximity. I actually almost bought a house here, and it was one of these communities that I was looking forward to being a part of. But today, I'm here on behalf of my boss, Senator Bob Archuleta, and I appreciate it that you actually had a picture with my boss there. I will scold him because he was not wearing a mask, and I am very cognizant of that. But Mayor Mora, you were wearing a mask almost in 95% of those pictures, and that's important because that sends a message of how important these things are. And your leadership has shown and demonstrates that kind of commitment to your community. I was tempted to actually have your children to come up here and have them do this presentation, if for no other reason than to see that gleam in your eye when you see your children. And when I see that leadership of you, it's probably because of your children in many respects. You grew up here, your children are seeing their father lead, lead by example, not only from those pictures, but in my experiences with you. So it's my pleasure to be here with you, sir, and I don't know your protocols as far as being able to take a picture, but if I can just read a couple of these lines. "Your one-year term as mayor providing guidance and a strong sense of community, especially during a pandemic, to create a high quality of life in the City of Santa Fe Springs. Your belief that the people living and working in this city would benefit from insightful, innovative, and creative leadership. Your work as a City Council delegate to the Southeast Area Social Services Authority, Liga California Cities, Coalition for the Gold Line, which is going to be incredible for this community when it ultimately does come here, and your flexibility in dealing with the things that quite often we, the state, put upon you. But you were able to work within those parameters, and you led your community and your city with great honor and great dignity. So on behalf of my boss, Senator Bob Archuleta, who, believe me, if he could be here, he would be here. But it's my honor to be here, and instead, I'd like to present to you this certificate of congratulations to Mayor."
Next, I'd like to bring up Ivan Solak, Representative from Supervisor Janice Hahn's office. Hold on, Ivan, we're going to cleanse the...
Ray, and Linda, is Linda Sanchez, Congresswoman Linda Sanchez, is available to speak as well.
Yeah, let's go ahead and let Linda speak, Congresswoman.
Good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much, and I apologize for not being able to be there in person. It's very bittersweet because we find ourselves at the beginning of a new year, so I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. But we are, it's a little bit bittersweet because we are almost back to square one when we're talking about the pandemic. And so I have also been exposed to COVID. I'm awaiting test results, so I could not be there in person. But I did want to, did want to join you this evening virtually to thank the outgoing Mayor, Mayor Mora. As an elected official, nobody knows more than we do the sacrifices that you make in order to serve a constituency and the family time that you give up in order to be available to your constituents in the city and to be accessible at events. And I know that you've worked incredibly hard over the past year, and that COVID has created special challenges in order to connect with the people that you represent. But I wanted to thank you for your service. I wanted to thank your family for sharing you with your constituents, because they obviously miss out on time with you when you have mayoral duties that take you away from them. So just wanted to say thank you for the tremendous work that you've put in as mayor over the last year. I want to congratulate the council and offer my help in any way that I can in order to see you succeed at the goals that you were setting for the new year for the City of Santa Fe Springs. So with that, I just, again, wanted to thank the mayor for his service and make myself available for the City Council and wish everybody a happy and, more importantly, a very healthy new year. Please do your best to try to slow the spread. We are not going to climb out of this pandemic without everybody putting in a little bit of effort. So thank you all, and God bless.
Thank you very much, Linda Sanchez. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll let Ivan speak.
Standing well, good evening, everyone. Ivan Solak, representing Supervisor Janice Hahn. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Normally, I would have a big scroll, but it's on its way, a little delay with us. But I wanted to be here to honor you, to thank you, Mr. Mayor, on your one year of service and really your commitment to the city. I know on many occasions I have called you to support an item, to support an issue, and even though sometimes you're on two Zoom meetings at the exact same time, you say, you know what, Ivan, I'm going to pull myself from one Zoom meeting and go to another, and that shows your commitment. And also, it's been a pleasure serving with you on SASPA. I'm your vice chair, your chair, and it's really a pleasure working with you and the other mayors of the Southeast to really bring programs to this region. So I just want to thank you, congratulate you, and also to whoever's going to be the new mayor, know that the supervisor stands ready to support you and work with you in any projects that you will be doing. So, Mr. Mayor, congratulations, and I want to thank you, and I minimum shake your hand.
Next, we have our sister city, City of Whittier Mayor Joe Venatieri.
Thank you, Ray. So, John, when I heard what was going down tonight, I said to my wife, I gotta, I gotta go support John. So, and I want everyone here to know, the people of Whittier, the Whittier City Council, we feel very, very akin to this council and to all of you because of the policing, the Whittier Police Department, and some other things that we're involved in that you probably all don't even know about. So this really is a special evening for me. This guy here, I don't know how many times I got on the phone and said, John, we need some help, whether it be something to do with the Los Angeles County District Attorney and some issues that were going on there, or some other legislation, or even redistricting to make sure that we kept Janice Hahn as our representative. The great thing about it, and Juanita, I don't see you, and Jay, I don't see you, but I know you're on, the great thing about it is you all always stepped up. And, John, you always stepped up, and I really appreciated your attitude of jumping on board and helping to make things happen. So it's a pleasure for me to be able, on behalf of the people of Whittier, to give you a certificate of commendation. I'm not going to read it, but I did pin in down here, I said, John, great job. So thanks so much for all your support, for all the people of Santa Fe Springs and the people of Whittier. We really appreciate you and just your can-do attitude. Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. William Crean, Superintendent of Little Lake School District. And it looks like we have the whole board here, which includes President Zamora, Vice President Cantu, Board Member Jimenez, Board Member Rock, and Clerk Gina Ramirez.
John, on behalf of the Little Lake City School District, we want to thank you for all you've done this year. It was a tough year, but you were able to keep connected with the schools, and that was a hard thing to do, and our students appreciate that. And we are always appreciative of the relationship that we have with the school, and you did a great job this year of making sure that our motto of kids come first was still part of the city goal. So thank you so much for that. We know anybody that leadership role through last year had a tough time, and you did a fantastic job. And again, we appreciate the relationship we have with all of you and how well we work together. And just as a reminder, John, I know your kids went to Santa Fe High School, but they also went to Lakeview and Lake Center where they got them ready for Santa Fe. And we have a little presentation for you, and Mrs. Zamora is going to present that.
John, thank you, and we appreciate all you, what you have done for the city. But just like Dr. Crean said, that you're so proud of your four children, but they came from Little Lake, and that's where they are now. But at the same time, not only your children, you always care for the whole residents here in Santa Fe Springs and always being part of helping out, even doing CPR for our teachers, anything that the district needed. So we thank you. And on behalf, we dedicate this book to the library on your name and from my colleagues, I think, if they want to say something to you. But God bless you, and thank you very much.
Good evening, John. Welcome, everyone. John, it's been many, many years we've got to work side by side here with the City of Santa Fe Springs. I was thinking back today about years ago, we used to work in that garden, turn the dirt with the rotor tiller and stuff, side by side, many years, many nights, many times working on the Christmas load. You've always cared, you've always put your time, effort, and energy in helping and assisting. I know the boys and the girl, your daughter here or her in Santa Fe, and I know what you've done to help and assist her. We've got to see each other, a lot of our cross-country meets and stuff. So, but I just want to say thank you, John, for always being there, supporting, coming out through our community and our city programming. But not only that, being, you know, friendly and coming out and shaking people's hand. I know you get that, you've been in our department, but it's gravitating... But it's gravitating to you that, and it's special. So I just want to say thank you for all your service. Thank you for leading our city in difficult times and just being you. And that's something special, that's a trait that you always have. And it's been special knowing your family of all these years and then watching your kids grow as well. So congratulations on being a mayor, and thank you for everything.
Hi, John. It's Janet. I just wanted to say I think you did a swimmingly well job, great job as being mayor. And I look forward to the City of Santa Fe Springs adopting the new Pledge of Allegiance Start of Ready, Set, Go. I just want to know, when you come from swimmers, you know, it goes pretty deep. Congratulations to you and to everyone on the council.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Mora, I just want to thank you for your leadership and for the support to our district and our community. And I want to also congratulate you on such a beautiful family. Your children are just amazing, and you must be so proud. Thank you.
Hello, John. So I sat up here with you about five years ago on the Planning Commission, and, you know, we would talk and stuff, and I've seen you grow and grow and grow and grow, mayor, doing a great job. And, you know, you've been a terrific leader, wonderful leader for the city, for the school district. And anytime we needed to reach out to you as the Planning Commission or the school district, you all, we've been there for us. So I just want to congratulate you on a successful year, and thank you for all you do for the city and beautiful family. Thank you.
I'd like now to bring up Mayor of Norwalk, Rick Ramirez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem, members of the city council, staff, residents of Santa Fe Springs, and invited guests. We haven't really worked together, John, and I'm trying to change that point of view with this, bridging the gaps between the City of Norwalk and the City of Santa Fe Springs. But we have so many mutual issues to, to work on together as a team and as a partnership. So on behalf of myself, newly appointed mayor, this is actually my first official public ceremony presentation. So I'm honored, I'm humbled to be here tonight to present you with this fine commendation for all your accomplishments this past year and to congratulate you on, on your family. You've done a great job. And on behalf of my colleagues on the city council, we want to extend a warm, I guess, partnership to not only you and, but the incoming mayor and the entire City of Santa Fe Springs as we continue to move forward in, in the new year to accomplish our goals and our mission. So on behalf of my colleagues on the city council from, from afar, over across the border of Norwalk, we want to present you with this commendation. Yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to bring up Kathy Fink, Chief Executive Officer from the Santa Fe Springs Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, mayor and council and city employees and residents of this great city of Santa Fe Springs. On behalf of our Santa Fe Springs Chamber Board, our Youth Enrichment Fund Board, our members, my staff, we would all like to thank you for all your support. The council's very supportive of the chamber, and it's very much appreciated. John goes a little above and beyond. He's been a mentor for us with our Santa Fe Springs or Santa Fe High School program, so we're very appreciative of that. And his children have gone through that program as well. So it's been a great accomplishment for us at the chamber and for the school and the students and the city. So on behalf of all of us, we would like to thank you for a great year and all your participation.
Is there anyone from the audience that would like to make some comments to the outgoing mayor at this point? Anybody else that I have not known that wants to speak? Okay, we'll have Mayor Protem Rodriguez. Got to take a picture, then you got to open it up. Okay, Johnny, can come back and open it up? Or do it right there. Councilmember Sarno, this is time to make any outgoing comments to both our mayor and Mayor Protem.
Well, first, I'd like to say, John, if this city had a poster child, you would be that picture. I don't think people really understand your whole legacy of what you have done for the city as a resident, as an employee, and now as a mayor. From the time you were wearing your Speedos at the pool, being a lifeguard, to owning your own practice, to continuously giving to our community through schools, through the Christmas Flow Program, through your own practice, and then now being on city council and being mayor. You've done a lifelong career of what the perfect resident should be doing in their life. And I thank you for that service because people like you don't come around too many times in this world. And we, we are lucky to have you in the city. So I thank you for all of your service, all of your leadership, and not just for today, for the past 35, 40 years of your contribute, your contributions to our city and to our residents. So this, this is not a one-year process. This has been a lifelong process for you. And I thank you, and your family is so blessed to have you as a father, a husband, and a mentor. I thank you for your service this year, and I look forward to working with you next year. Annette, the same, you know, I've only got to work with you for a short period of time this year. I thank you for your service. It's been a remarkable, kind of a unprecedented one year, but I thank you, and I look forward to working with you in the next year. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay.
Councilmember Trujillo, this is time for your comments to the mayor and Mayor Protem.
Here we go. Hey, John. John, it's been an honor to work side by side with you. It's, you've been a mentor toward me when I was a parking wreck girl, and you were at the life, you were a lifeguard as a parking wreck, working on the Christmas float with you. You always gave 110%. And like Jay said, you are that perfect resident here in our city. You've gone beyond to give yourself, you put your family to the side. And it's funny, I don't know how many years now that we would be on the Christmas float, but you would be on call because your wife was pregnant, and you still showed up at the Christmas float waiting for a call. That tells you how much you love your city. That tells you how you, you do for your city. And you don't ask for anything in return. You are John. You are John, the lifeguard, you're John, the chiropractor. You are John, and that's what's great about it. And it's been an honor to be up there, working as, you know, as friends, as we can even say colleagues, we could say family. So thank you so much, and it's been a blessing to have you on council with us. Annette, again, it's been great working with you. This is your, your fourth year on here on council, and it's great to have another female on here. It's great to see that we are all working together as a group to better our city, not just one, one department, all departments. We work together to make sure that our city has everything it needs. It's been great working next to you. One more year for us to go, and then we start all over again. But thank you so much for being the leader that you have been here too. So thank you for both being mayor and Mayor Protem this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Juanita.
Thank you, Juanita.
Councilmember Zamora.
John, just thank you for your, not only your leadership, but your understanding and patience during this, this difficult time. I, I know that during this time, we have had a lot of staff reach out, you know, tremendously to not only all of us, but I know you being the mayor, they'd reach out left and right, just looking for some kind of guidance and certainty because, especially with COVID, with the uptick coming around. That's been the new thing when we've had the gun violence, graffiti, just different things. I mean, you know, it, it hits hard because, you know, you've taken that, you know, full role, knowing that it's been difficult situation. So I just want to thank you for just the efforts that you put in, knowing that you're giving your, you know, you're doing your best to give your heart to the community and still trying to juggle your family with all the, you know, graduations, school accolades, games, and it's kind of hard to do all of it all at once and then still be the mayor. So I just want to commend you on all those efforts that you put out for the City of Santa Fe Spring and just being a man of God, just being a man of faith. I commend you on that, too. Ms. Rodriguez, thank you for just supporting John, you know, being the Mayor Protem that you were, supporting John. If there's anything that you need, you always needed a right, you know, you need a right hand. So you were that strong right hand for John. So of course, he sit on his left side, but still, you know, you're being a strong right hand. So it's just great because I know sometimes as men, we forget that other approach of, you know, being a little more sensitive to what's going on. And it's easier to talk to somebody who has the HR experience, especially during these times. And I think that was really helpful during these times because where we, as a city, thought, you know, we should take this direction, it was great just to turn to Annette, having that, having that background and just knowing that she can, you know, give us that other sound advice, what's happening in the private sector and, you know, all your efforts that you get involved. I mean, that's just remarkable. You know, you truly love this city. You truly love the people in this city, and you always do your part to give your heart also and your soul to, to this community. So I just want to thank you for all the efforts of being not only a, a good friend, but being family. So thank you for all the efforts, Annette, and, you know, to Thomas, to her husband, and to all the families, you know, not only the Mora family, but the Rodriguez family. Thank you for allowing us to borrow these individuals, you know, and take up their time because the city needs them. So like I said once before, may God always put a hedge of protection and blessings on, on you guys because I know it's difficult when dad, mom, aunt, grandma, whatever you want to say here, when they can't make something because they have city duties. Believe me, you're, you're in their hearts. So thank you, guys.
Good evening. I'd like to say something to our Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank Dr. John Mora for his leadership while serving as our mayor during this most critical time, very critical time, through this pandemic. And it has been a difficult time, and there had to be a lot of decisions to be made during these last two years and decisions that we had never had to face in the past. And through his leadership, we made those, those changes, those decisions. And it wasn't easy because we have never been through a pandemic before. But he made it seem very easy to glide through this and help our staff, help our residents, and just help our city. It's very important that we all work together to, for the betterment of our city. And so you did it, Mr. Mayor, and so we're so proud of you. And, and thank you to your family for allowing us to take you away from your everyday duties. But it is true, a lot of times he would go to events and he'd say, Annette, I have to leave in about 10 minutes because my son has something going on or my wife has something. He's a, a family man, and he's a very, very nice person as a friend, as a colleague. I, I'm so honored to know you. And I, I just thank you for everything that you've done for our city as being our Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
We're going to have the Mayor Protem give her special gifts at this point to some special guests, and you can make your comments also.
Okay, can I make my comments first?
Sure, sure.
I had to write a couple of things down because I just don't want to forget stuff. So first of all, being Mayor Protem was an amazing experience. It's something that you don't always get to do in your lifetime. So I'm just so honored to be here, sitting before all of you. I thank you for all your support, the, the Trujillos and the Women's Club, my husband, my sister, my sister, our school board, Ivan, the Lopez family. I just, Gilbert, Janie, Lori Rios. I just am so honored to be here. The Flores family, my sister. So I just.
I just wanted to say thank you also to my colleagues, Councilmember Jay Sarno, Councilmember Juanita Trujillo, Councilmember Joangel Zamora, and Dr. and Mr. Mayor Mora for entrusting me to be our city's Mayor Potem. It's very important to me. I take my job very seriously. I'd like to thank my husband, Thomas Rodriguez, for his nonstop continued support to be my by my side in all of my duties. Everyone knows Thomas that's in this room, and everybody knows all the volunteerism and the service work that we do as a family, as a family unit. And Thomas gives me advice, and he listens to my advice, my ideas, and he is not afraid to disagree with me. That's so thank you, Thomas. And my daughter Priscilla, she's over there. Priscilla is the same way, very connected, and we we don't always meet in the middle. We discuss things, and we love each other's company, and she's my only daughter. And I really feel privileged to have Priscilla as my daughter. I would like to say thank you to my stepmother, Elsa Hernandez. She is in our Women's Club, and she helped me through the death of my mother. And she was always there to be by my side. So very happy and privileged to have her in my life. And my sister Gina Flores, I don't know what I would do without her. We we have been so close, and she just means the world to me. And my sister Margarita, sorry. I just wanted to say, Margarita, you know, we are family people. Way back when Margarita's nine years younger than me, and we I would have the family over, have all of our family, and, you know, show this is what I do. I bring family together. Well, Margarita, she didn't take it from me, but she does the same thing. She brings the family together, and she keeps the family unit together. So I wanted to thank our Women's Club, Mary Arias and Lupe Placencia. They have been tremendous to me. They've helped me. I've learned from them. I highly respect them, and I would probably do anything for them within reason. And I I I wanted to thank my commissioners for everything that they've done for me. I'm so proud of them. And I would wouldn't have picked anybody else but but you. Felix Miranda, he's my traffic commissioner, and Francis Carvajal is my planning commissioner. Yes, yes. They do so much for our city, so much. And my dear friend, you know, Jimmy Mendoza, he's always been there to support me and help me, and he's just a very fun and loving, and I'm I'm so thankful that we have our friendship together. I do have four bouquets that I was saving for my family, and I would like to give one of them to my daughter Priscilla. I would like to give the other one to my stepmother Elsa Hernandez. I would like to give one of them to my sister Gina Flores. And I would like to give one of them, and I know my sister brought me a bouquet, but let me give you a bouquet. Margarita Munoz. So I'll go give those to you.
It's all you, Mayor.
Okay, first and foremost, Annette, you're a Potem. Thank you for being my left-hand person, but actually the right-hand person, and I had no worries about not being able to make a certain event, because, you know, you've got my back. And that's not a chiropractic pun. I mean, seriously, you know, you had me, so I had no, you know, no worries if I was not able to attend a function. And there were here at City Hall, our times are just all over the place. We don't really get too much time to just stop and talk, but, you know, I always knew that you were there. So incredible job as Mayor Potem, and I appreciate you very much. Thank you. And before I get started with the with the ending here, you know, I do want to thank City of Woodyear, City of Norwalk, Rick, congratulations, and thank you for us being your first event as a mayor. Thank you so much. Rick from Bob Archill, thank you for being here. Kathy and your chamber team, I appreciate it very much. The Lake City School Board, thank you, Ian. Thank you, and send my regards to to your boss. And who am I missing? The Chamber of Commerce, Lou Sanchez, Bob Archill. So first and foremost, thank you all for being there, and thank you for the nice accolades. And also thank you, everybody else, for for being here at this time. This is almost surreal. I really appreciate what everybody has, everybody being here, and your remarks. So I thank you very much for that. And also being back in chambers, and I'm hoping we're able to continue this, because, yeah, we're hitting peak numbers again. But Scott, to see Gail and Janie and the Nakamura's, those are almost like figureheads here in our chamber councils for the longest time, and this is Rios that's back there somewhere, and there's a few other people that, you know, I might be missing, but yeah, thank you all for 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 being back over here. So you know, though I am mayor, you know, I am part of a team, and this is for all of us, you know, virtually, you know, we don't have Juanita and Jay up here, but we are a team of five. And, you know, as Joangel had mentioned before, they mentioned Annette's background in in HR. You know, all five of us come from different backgrounds. We have different thoughts and ideas. We may bump heads at a certain time, but we're all doing this for the betterment and the best interest for for our city. We're able to agree to disagree at times, but we are a team. It's not just one person up here. I just happen to be the, I guess, forefront here, but we are a team of five, and I cannot do it alone without, you know, a council with me. So I'd like to applaud them first and foremost. Okay, and also I'd like to thank the council for their vote and confidence to be a mayor mayor for the year of 2021. I am, and I continue to be honored. And I also want to thank the staff or employees for their continued support. I want to do a special thanks to my family for enduring my role as a council member. It seemed that every time, you know, just my daughter turned around, I was on the phone or going to a meeting. And I got to hear it day after day after day. But the thing is, you know, there is a lot of time that I did spend away from home, not only on Zoom meetings and phone calls, but also our regular meetings, and then sometimes a couple of days away, attending city business, either in Sacramento or, you know, other city functions. When I ran for council, I wanted to join a team that was going to progressively move our city forward, and I did join that team. I made a commitment to the city, to its residents, and then also to to its employees. Unfortunately, we are battling a this unreal phenomenon, you know, known as COVID. This was a life-changing phenomenon that we've been battling for almost two years. And just when we thought we could see the light at the end of the tunnel, it seems like our tunnel is collapsing on us. But we're going to remain resilient, and we will be okay. We'll come out on the other side. Unfortunately, during this past year or so, we did lose some loved ones. You know, it was tragic. It seemed like, you know, they should not have gone at this time, but you know, it was a sad event for those that have gone. Maybe they should not have. But, you know, my heartfelt condolences to those that have been affected during this time. Safety for all residents and staff continues to be our priority here with the city. We as council and the management team, you know, want to make sure that, you know, we, all the residents and staff remain safe during these times as we get through it. Most incredibly impressed of the ingenuity and creativity that the staff in our departments had as we navigated these times. Business, it it continued, and when we had employees that may not be here on site, they worked from home, but our city continued, and, you know, and thankfully to our team, you know, we are fiscally sound at this moment, and we did good. We kind of came out on the other side. I'm very honored and to proudly serve on your city council. We are Santa Fe Springs. I thank you for the opportunity to serve on council. Have a great night and Happy New Year, and please stay safe, everybody. Thank you. So I do have a couple bouquets that I'm getting to give out to the beautiful ladies in my life, my wife and my daughter. My mom is also here as well, so my mom's sitting out front. Hello. I got my sister, my niece, my nephew. And I thank you guys for being here on this special night. Appreciate it.
Okay. Adam number eight. Insulation of Mayor and Mayor Potem. City Clerk.
Thank you, everyone. I'll begin with the nomination of the mayor. I now declare the office of the mayor of Bacon and call for nominations. Are there any nominations from the council for the office of mayor?
I'd like to nominate Annette Rodriguez for mayor.
I'd like to nominate Joangel Zamora.
We have two nominations. Since we have more than one, I will be taking roll call.
Just to let you know, I'd like to decline that nomination. This is Jo Angel.
Okay. Thank you. In that case, since we only have one nomination, since Councilmembers Zamora declined the nomination, I would like to congratulate Annette Rodriguez as mayor. Okay, we will now move with to the nominations of the Mayor Potem. I now declare the office of the Mayor Potem Bacon and call for nominations. Are there any nominations from the council for Mayor Potem?
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Jo Angel Zamora for Mayor Potem.
I'd like to nominate Juanita Trujillo.
Since there is more than one nomination, I will take roll call for each council member. We'll have an opportunity to announce whom they select. Councilmember Sarno.
Juanita Trujillo.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Juanita Trujillo.
Councilmember Zamora.
Jo Angel Zamora.
Mayor Potem Rodriguez.
Jo Angel Zamora.
Mayor Mora.
Jo Angel Zamora.
Since we have three council members select, Councilmember Zamora, congratulations. You're the new Mayor Potem. We will now move forward to the Mayor and Mayor Potem's pin ceremony. If I could ask our new mayor, Annette Rodriguez, to move to the front of the dais and have a family member place a pin. Thank you. Mayor Potem Zamora, it would be your turn to have your family assist you with your pin.
All right, so I'm actually going to call my mom up here, Javier, my nephew, Jay, Gina, Gabriel, Manuel, and Rick. You guys can all come up at the same time, please.
Gina, you too.
Gina, you too.
I don't. Take Juanita's seat, I'm sorry, Annette's seat, Joe Angel, and then... Yeah, just for now, just for this closing of the meeting. John, I guess it doesn't matter where you sit, wherever you want to sit.
Congratulations, Mayor Rodriguez and Mayor Pro Tem Zamora. This is a time for both of you to make comments.
Thank you. Should I go first, Janet? Or should I have our Mayor Pro Tem go first?
Either one of you could go first.
Okay, I'll go first. Okay. First of all, I would like to thank, again, all of you for being here. This is a tremendous accomplishment for me. I don't want to say accomplishment, because it's to serve the people. It's to serve you, and I, my heart is in it, and I'm here for you. I really am. This is what I've waited... Thank you. This is what I've waited so long for, not to be mayor, but just to serve and, and just be a part of your lives. It is an honor and a privilege to be your incoming mayor. I'd like to thank our city manager and our directors and our staff for all your hard work that you have done for us this year. Thank you to our first responders. I know they're outside for keeping us safe, and we appreciate everything with our Whittier Police. Thank you to our firefighters. Thank you to everybody that has worked so hard. Our staff is amazing, the things that they do for us, they're so professional. Everybody is so professional here. I've, I mean, I don't want to say I've never seen it, but they really are spot-on professional people. I'd like to take this time to, to again, thank my husband. I wanted to introduce my brother-in-law, Daniel Rodriguez. He's the one taking video. And Thomas's brother. And I would like to again thank Priscilla, my son-in-law Jonathan. My grandson Isaac is here, born and bred Santa Fe Springs, from Stone Soup to Jersey to Lake Center Middle School to Santa Fe High School, and now he's at Cal State Fullerton, getting a career going on. I'm so proud of him, because he's going to be somebody someday. So I'm very, he's already somebody, but he's going to make it big. I want to thank my granddaughter, Amaya Rodriguez. She makes me so proud every day. And I wanted to just say thank you to my church, my church family, but I've known them forever. Starr and Kenny, you know, we meet every Sunday at Calvary Chapel, and we pray together, we work together, and that's, that's success right there. I want to thank you. And I know that we have our other Calvary brothers and sisters right there, and everybody else with the churches in Santa Fe Springs. As your mayor, I will continue to work hard to make sure our city remains a safe city for all residents, and safety is our number-one priority in our city. And so we are going to make sure of that, and we'll do everything we can. I will continue to be transparent with everyone, because you are so important to me. I value what you bring to our city, and that's why the people, my supporters that are so close to me are here today, because I value everybody. But you, all of you have been there for me, from Ray Trio that took me in campaigning in his convertible, although it was freezing, had a definitely good time, so thank you, Ray. If you have ideas, we want to hear them. If you have concerns, we want to hear them, because we care, and we will make every effort to make sure that your concerns are heard. And as your mayor, I will be here for everyone, and it's, we're transparent, and we want to be efficient. We want to just make sure that every, we're on board, we're in sync with each other as a team. As Pastor Ray said at one of our sermons, "We are nothing without the family unit." It starts at home, it starts in the community, it starts at City Hall, and it starts everywhere. We need each other, and we need to be easy to do business with. We are going to be, again, transparent, we are going to stay connected, and as your mayor, I am excited to get things done. I want to tell you as well as council member to Mayor Pro Tem, Joe Angel Zamora, I want to tell you how proud I am of you today to get a long-awaited position that should have been given to you time and time again. And I'm so happy that justice has, will always be served, and today, justice was served today. I want to tell you that this, this gentleman here has given back so much to the community, but he doesn't go around and tell people what he's done. He just does it. He has made all of us so proud, and I just want to thank him for everything that he does for everybody. He won't tell people, because he's not a bragger, he just goes out and he does his work, and he's a God-fearing man, and for that, I'd just like to say thank you. And I'm sorry, I'm so sorry that you had to wait so long, but you know what? Better late than never, right? Thank you. Thank you so much.
I just want to thank once again God, you know, without Him, I mean, of course, we know that nothing is possible, and everything that is impossible is possible. Yeah, I know that I'm not a perfect person, and I know I don't, you know, try to be. I mean, I just try to do my part to do the best that I can to serve a community that I love. Sometimes there is imperfections in that, and sometimes it makes waves for individuals. You know, John, I do appreciate, you know, being a man of your word, you know? And, you know, just a little storyline with John, when he first, the second time he was running, you know, I was going to support John, and what ended up happening was, you know, I had Mr. J Sarno tell me that I could only support two people, him and somebody else, and they were against, you know, Annette, because to be honest, Juanita doesn't want any other female. So that's why when I supported Annette, I did what I felt was right. And because my colleagues thought it was wrong, because they want to bully, they want to do whatever they can to get the people that they want, who are going to obey them, that's the hard part, is saying no to your colleagues who are the cancer. That's why our city is not moving forward. That's why we have to fight behind the scenes to move and progress, to have these relationships with the different people, to have the relationships with the school board. Why? Because if you don't say hi to certain individuals on our council, they're upset. Staff get in trouble for not saying hi. I don't have to say that about John, I have to say that about Annette, I have to say that about myself, and I surely don't have to say that about Jay, I'll throw him in there too. But one other individual, if you don't say hi, believe me, you're going to get in trouble. And it's not supposed to be that way. Everybody's supposed to be treated fairly. And what happens is, our staff, they're scared to even make a decision. They're scared to make even choices. And these people get paid really good money, and to give them that confidence to say, hey, go out and do this. But then you have individuals behind the scenes trying to say no, even though as a city, we're not going to make no money, you know, from big box office, you know? You have Amazon come in, city doesn't make nothing. Why? Because people are working deals with their friends on council. They're going to staff, telling them, no, you can't do that. And because I fight against it, they get upset. This is why I get passed up. Oh, you know what? You're going to keep fighting? That's not fair. So they can control the rhetoric, because they can do whatever they want. But you know what? I fear God. I don't fear man, I don't fear woman. I'm always going to stand up for righteousness, whoever it may be. Today, I'm glad you made the decision, John. I know it was difficult for you, and I know you thought about it, but believe me, you know, I mean, do I want to call John out? No, I don't. But this is why I had to choose, because somebody told me, you cannot choose Annette. And I said, you know what? I'm going to choose Annette and you, Jay. That's it. So I left it open for John, because I didn't want to hurt John. That's the real story. I've never said it. Yeah, I sent you a text, but the text wasn't bad. I just said, hey, I haven't got a phone call from you, John, in a couple of months. So with that being said, I don't think you need my support. So I said, okay, I take it back then. But if somebody doesn't call you for months, then what are you going to do? You know? But that's what happens in our world. Everybody gets scared. So guess what? You know, we have to be, I mean, I have to be a man of faith. That's it. A man of faith. I honor my God, and I'm always going to honor my God. If these two individuals want to play hypocrite, if they want to be the hypocrites that they are, that's just the name of the game. But guess what? I chose this path, and I know God always has a hedge of protection around me, so I'm not afraid. You know why? Because when those fiery darts come, when I walk through the valley of shadow of death, I will fear no evil. So understand, I come here to support, live, breathe my God in the city of Santa Fe Springs. So God bless the city of Santa Fe Springs always. I thank you guys, and I love you guys. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe Angel, Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Chris Mayorga Esperanza Mayorga, Yolanda Scott Marion Ortiz, and Omar Thomas Isfarsa. We have a small reception at Town Center for the celebration, if anybody would like to attend. Meeting adjourned.